All right, we are going to reconvene the May 2nd, 2017 regularly scheduled board meeting for the Richmond Two Board of Trustees where we just returned from executive session to discuss the items that were mentioned in the motion to go into executive session. At this time, we will have the inspirational moment and the pledge of allegiance, Dr. Elkins Johnson.
Yes, Mr. Chair, gives me great honor to introduce our inspirational moment presenter. He's Tyson Brown. Tyson is one of our Bowel Magnet Program students at Ridgeview High School. He's a member of the National Junior Beta Club. And also, when he was in middle school, he was involved with the Student Government Association. He's involved with student council at Ridgeview High School, the Ascend Youth Enrichment Program with the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. And he's also the chairman of the Youth Outreach Program Ministry in his church. I present to you our next doctor, lawyer, president, whatever you think. He has big dreams and visions, and I'm so proud to have Tyson come before us this evening. Tyson?
Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening.
To Superintendent Hamm, Superintendent-elect Dr. Davis, and the distinguished members of our school board, especially Dr. Elkins, I humbly thank you for this formidable opportunity on this evening. I've just stopped by briefly to inspire you in the sense that a change must come upon our district. The Webster Dictionary tells us that the word "change" means to follow a different course, or to change direction, which is what we are in need of. I'm able to tell you firsthand that being an African-American student in this district is not always easy. I've been in District Two schools since kindergarten, and as you have all probably guessed, I've been African-American for a good minute now also. In my experience, I have often been met with racial adversity in the classroom and seen as a troublemaker from the beginning, simply because of my skin complexion, and I'm a pretty tall black kid. Oh, how wrong these teachers were to judge me on sight. But somehow, by the grace of God and perseverance, I've made it thus far. Our district claims to offer an equal educational experience for everyone, but the question is, based on recent events, can you really believe that? Now, don't get me wrong. I love my school and my district, and I've created a plethora of great memories throughout these last 10 years that I've been here. However, no longer can I stand by and watch others who look like me and myself be discriminated against. I say to you, board members, lead this effort towards racial equality. If you are familiar with it, you know the Bible says in Proverbs, Chapter 22, verse 6, "Train up a child in the way he should go, and when he is old, he will not depart from it." Like a child imitates everything their parents do, think about every teacher in this district as your child. They'll act upon what you enforce upon them. It's difficult to accept for me that a dress code is more strictly enforced than racial equality amongst students. So finally, on this evening, I charge you with these six words: Let your walk match your talk. Thank you for your time, and now lead us in our pledge of allegiance. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for your time.
All right, if I can have a motion to approve our agenda. So moved by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. If there's no discussion, we'll have the vote. Motion passes seven zero. Next, we have our student focus. Dr. Hamm?
And I'll call on Nancy Gregory to introduce our student focus for this evening.
Good evening, Chairman Manning, board members, Dr. Hamm. Bookman Road Elementary School is the student focus for tonight's school board meeting. We welcome Bookman Road Principal Dr. Kendra Hill to the podium. She will highlight ways that students contribute to the school and surrounding community through community service, which is reflected in the school's new vision statement.
Thank you. To Chairman Manning, school board members, Dr. Hamm, Dr. Davis, executive staff and guests, it gives me great pleasure to present the student focus on this evening on behalf of the Bookman Road Elementary School students and staff. At Bookman Road, we are developing beacons who light the way in personal character, academics, and community service. Tonight, our Bookman Road SWAT team, Students Working to Advance Technology, will share ways that students light the way through service to our school and surrounding community. Ladies and gentlemen, I will now turn the student focus over to our very capable SWAT team members under the leadership of Mrs. Tasia King, our wonderful technology learning coach. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We are excited to highlight our amazing school, Bookman Road Elementary School.
We are the school's technology group called the SWAT team, and we have enjoyed putting this presentation together for you.
If you didn't know, our beacons are working hard at becoming good citizens. Our short film tonight shows you how. We hope you enjoy it.
Welcome to 1245 Bookman Road, better known as Bookman Road Elementary School. We are so glad that you're here. As beacons, we take pride in using our life skills and lifelong guidelines in and out of school. One way we do this is through class services. Did you know that every class in our school provides a service to our school or community? This gives us a chance to learn how to serve others. Let's start with some school classroom services. Did you know that each week our kindergarten and fifth grade students are responsible for taking recycling down from each classroom to the drop-off area to be recycled? Let's hop down to third grade. Can you see this third-grade student using the life skill of caring to write a personalized birthday card for students here at Bookman? Men, oh men, do we love to keep our school tidy, especially when it comes to showing off your work. Our third-grade students go around weekly to tidy up loose ends on our hallway boards and boards. Our teachers really appreciate this service. Our school ambassador group is responsible for welcoming new beacons to our very special school. This group of first-grade leaders provide tours for families and those visiting Bookman for the first time. They also paint some pretty awesome farewell lucky rocks for students who may be leaving our Bookman family. When special visitors come to our school, they'll be serenaded by our Chamber of Converse. This is a third-grade class service. We believe in extending our services beyond the walls of Bookman Road Elementary School. Here are some ways that we reach our community with service projects. One of our kindergarten classes, along with the second-grade class, meet regularly to read, do projects together, and learn songs with the help of the wonderful second-grade teacher who plays the guitar. We spread our love of singing to our grandbuddies at Wildwood Downs Assisted Living Facility.
For about a month, our kindergarten students collected money from each classroom to donate to our local fire station on Spears Creek Church Road. The fire station uses our donation to help the fire education program. Throughout the month of March, our fantastic first graders led a school-wide effort to collect donations for the Columbia Police Department K-9 unit. We are proud to say our school raised $510 for this effort.
We're giving items that they rightfully owe.
Our second graders have big hearts. Their charity involved collecting underclothes, coloring books, and crayons for children who are in the Palmetto Health Children's Hospital. Our Bookman family donated tons of items.
Do you know what to do with plastic soda rings? Our second graders sure do. Miss English's class collects these to be recycled. Our fourth graders were in charge of collecting toothbrushes for the donated toothbrush organization to help children and adults in third-world countries with a dental hygiene.
Put your shoes in a plastic bag and throw them in the bin.
Shoes for Water is a charity that takes donated shoes to rural villages and people in Kenya, Africa. This charity is spearheaded by our fifth graders.
Beacon Battle Buddies is a special club for students who have a family member who is currently serving in the armed forces. This club is a way for military students to connect with each other and learn more about what makes their military family so special. Last but not least is us, the SWAT team. SWAT, or Students Working to Advance Technology, is our student technology team. This group of fourth and fifth graders provide services for our school, such as photography for events, commercials, PSAs, and tidying up those dusty devices. So there you have it. We are committed to serving others at Bookman Road. We remind ourselves by saying our mission every morning.
We are beacons who light the way in personal character, academics, and community service.
Great job. Thank you all very much. What a great presentation. Good work going on at Bookman Road. Next on our agenda, we have our consent agenda. If I can have a motion?
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Ms. Mackey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Agostini. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have the vote at this time. And motion passes seven zero. Next on our agenda, our legislative update. Mr. Plank?
Yes, tonight, the legislative update, those items are surrounding the budget, and we'll pass that into the budget section.
Okay, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is public participation. I have no one signed up, but if you'd like to speak before the board, please do so now. Okay, and students, thank you very much. Sorry for the late-night parents. Please forgive us. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have our executive session items. Item 9 dot 1, student expulsions. I'm sorry, item 9 dot 2, student appeals. If I can have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would like to pull out students number two, three, four, and five. For student number one, I'd like to make the motion, Blythewood Academy. Student number six, return to homeschool with services and strict probation. Student number seven, Blythewood Academy, with Lareda, please.
Okay. Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Is there any discussion? With no discussion. Sorry, Ms. Sherman, I'm moving this along pretty quick tonight. You let me know when you're ready. With no discussion, we'll have the vote at this time. Everybody make sure you voted. There we go. Motion passes seven zero. Ms. Agostini.
For student number two, I'd like to make the motion that we deny the appeal.
Motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? We'll have the vote at this Motion passes five to two. Ms. Agostini?
Student number three, Blythewood Academy.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll Motion passes four to three. Ms. Agostini?
Student number four, return to homeschool with strict probation.
All right, motion's been made by Ms. Agostini. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by, I'm sorry, who was that? Mr. Plank? Is there any discussion? With no Did everybody vote on that one? Who didn't? I didn't? I don't see it on my screen, so it didn't pop up. Motion passes seven zero. That's it, right?
Student number five.
No, I'm sorry. Student number five, go ahead.
Student number five, deny the appeal.
Student number five, deny the appeal. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Caution Parker. Is there any discussion? Did it show me voting again, or? Because I hit yes. Okay. Mr. Shannon, who?
I voted.
Yeah, I voted earlier, so.
I vote, oh.
Well, y'all go ahead and say what you're, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Yes.
I voted yes as well.
Thank you. Now, I don't feel like it was just me. Motion passes six to one. I'm sorry for the technical difficulties. That's not Ms. Sherman's problem. It's just some glitch in the system. 9 dot 3, contractual matter regarding auditing services.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to select Burkitt, Burkitt, and Burkitt as the district's annual auditing firm for three years with an option to renew for two additional years.
Motion's been made by Mr. Plank. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Mackey. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll have We have issues.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I won't lay all my issues out, but I'm at with this particular.
Oh.
There we go. It says.
Got it.
Oh, okay. It just said it popped up for me. Thank you. Seven zero. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, old business action requested. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. At your last meeting, we brought you a first reading of Policy BB, which deals with the school board's legal status. Policy BBA, it has to do with the board's powers and duties. And EF, which is a food service policy designed to facilitate compliance with federal and state requirements for food services. Hearing no request for any changes to those policies, we're recommending approval this evening.
Motion, um, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Plank. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Is there any discussion? With no discussion, we'll Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, item 10 dot 2, general fund budget. Dr. Hamm?
Mr. Chairman, as you know, we received input on our budget from our faculty, our staff, our community, and certain U.S. Board members. We've gone through a rigorous process of vetting the budget requests for addressing our needs in light of what our district priorities are. And tonight, we're happy to bring our proposed budget to you for your approval. Dr. Myler will be presenting that budget information.
Dr. Myler?
Thank you. I believe everyone has a hard copy with them on the proposed budget.
Yes.
We reviewed this budget on the 18th. That was the first reading. But April, we reviewed this again in a special call board meeting last Tuesday on the 25th. We have adjusted this budget based on, compared to the April 25th, April 18th budget. We were asking for a 7.9 mil increase, a total of $13.9 million additional funds for next year. We've reduced that budget. We brought you a list of priority items on the 25th, and we reduced the budget by $872,000, the budget request, excuse me, the budget request by $872,000, for a total of $13.0 million, $13,000, $13,327,000. And it represents a 4.99% increase over last year's general fund budget. It represents a mil increase of 4.97 mils, where the cap is 7.9. And you have the budget in front of you. It would be a total of $273,912,590, all running together right now.
Yeah.
And we ask you to consider this budget and give it your second reading. We present, we are required by county council to submit this to county council tomorrow, so that's why we sped the process up a little bit. Do you have any questions?
Before we go on, I do want to recognize County Auditor's Office being here today. Thank you very much for being with us.
James, you spoke to James earlier?
Yeah, I used to work with James back in the day, so. When I was, I wasn't as smart back then. Or maybe it's the other way. I don't know. But can I have a motion on this before we have a discussion?
I'd like to motion that we accept the budget as presented.
All right, motion's been made by Mr. Plank. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson. I open up the floor for discussion.
I will point out, before you ask any, if you have any questions, the priority order that we presented last Tuesday on the 25th is exactly the same priority that you have in front of you. It was just, we cut it off at 13 million, 27,000. And so, there's been no reshuffling or anything. The priorities are exactly like they were last Tuesday.
Okay, discussions, questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to just say that based on last Tuesday's meeting, I appreciate the board working very hard together. This was a challenging, as every year, challenging process to be able to balance what we need to do in the district and meet the growing needs, teachers, classroom size, new programs, continuing to preserve our excellence in this district, and to have the choices, the options that are there, and at the same time, balance that with our business community and those who have rental properties and those who pay for the operating costs for this district. And so, we were presented with a budget that would have gone as high as 7.9 mil. We have pulled off of that some. We believe that there's, that the district's able to work with what we've been able to propose, and that you've proposed, that we've, we'll see agreed upon, and at the same time, recognizing that we're protecting, preserving the potential growth of business and encouraging this is a great place to come, do business, and be part of the school. So I want to thank you for your hard work, Dr. Myler and your team.
We appreciate your hard work, too. This has been a difficult one, given the requirements from the state in terms of the pension system, the uncertainty of funding from the state, the difficulties there. We appreciate that. If you remember, the total request, this is 13 million, the total request is $5 million of needed things that were not funded, and we appreciate your assistance in that.
And, Mr. Chair, I would like to just bring up, I am thankful also that we were able to, with an average growth rate of 5.8 in our budget, we were actually able to come in under 5% growth at 4.99. I'd like to see that. And again, we appreciate your work with the variety of things that have been happening in the General Assembly as well.
Ms. Mackey?
Thank you is not a strong enough word for the work that you and your team have done. There are lots of people, you are the figurehead and the presenter, but there are lots of people on your team and district staff that work together to make this happen. I just want to acknowledge that last week's budget session was intense, and I appreciate a lot of explanations. There are, you know, everyone's needs are not going to be met, but I think we acknowledged priorities, the things that are concerned, some of the priorities that we're going to hope to work toward. You know, we don't have enough money to fund every priority or thing that's we concerned, but I appreciate the people who were in the room last week during last week's budget session to provide explanations to us, to explain to us why things are the way they are. And I think we had a really heart-to-heart conversation about where we're going, about future priorities and things of that nature. And I just appreciate that. It was very helpful to me to understand, especially from executive staff who are over certain departments, the decision-making that goes into the process of some of these, I don't want to say line items, but some of these funded things, funded items that we're funding. And so, I appreciate that and look forward to us working together in, you know, years to come, and having more and more priorities met as we're able to do that. So I appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate that.
That was a great session that we had last week.
I am just the talking head. Everybody here, they do the work.
I didn't say talking head. Figurehead, sounds, no pun intended, figurehead.
I did want to mention that Shelley Allen is very instrumental in this. Penny didn't any of this here. Shelley would be here tonight, but her father-in-law's funeral is today, so we, I excused her for that.
Oh, gosh.
Thank you.
But she's very instrumental in this. But a lot of people, every one of those line items had hours of vetting.
And we were able to see that last week. So just thank you for asking all of our questions last week. That was a tough session, but necessary. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Other board members? Also want to thank everybody for the hard work, for this board coming together. I think, as Mr. Plank says, it shows measured growth in a budget. We know there's always more that we can do. I think when you look at where our priorities are as a district, it's interesting, as I reflect on the young man's comments that opened up our meeting today. And you look at the things that we've done in our district, such as Dr. Grant's position, the behavior specialist, many, many of the programs we put in place. I think we've done a lot to address some of the concerns we've heard, such as his throughout the district for many years now, to improve on many of those areas and concerns that we know we need to address. I think we've come a long way from maybe where he started in school. But I think that we've done a good job of adding these programs and services, what I call social services in many ways, but are programs we have to have in place to take care of our students. And so, the commitment to social workers, the commitment that we have to our, to many other programs that we have like those things are necessary. And I appreciate our, you know, taxpayers who are paying the burden for it. And I think we're a better school district. It's why we continue to grow. And so, I think we'll be in a good place with this. with this. If there's no other comments, we'll have the vote at this time. Motion passes seven zero, thank you very much.
On behalf of my staff, and I can't speak for everyone, but I think everybody would say, thank you very much for y'all's support, too. Thank you.
Absolutely, I want to thank, and just last comment, Dr. Davis and Dr. Hamm, y'all just done a tremendous job through this whole transition, superintendent-elect to superintendent. I think, I speak for the whole board when I say, thank you both very much for this just really seamless transition between the two of you, and I think the budget process was really a big reflection of y'all working together, allowing things to progress and move, and just can't say enough how much we appreciate both of y'all and the work that you're doing in these areas. I know it's hard, but we appreciate that. Thank you for making this easy for us.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thanks. All right, new business, no action requested. Dr. Hamm, I'll let you read the alphabet soup there.
Yes, we're continuing our march through the review and revisions to update our policy manual, so we're asking for the first reading of Policy BBA, Board Member Authority and Responsibilities, BBBB, Board Member Elections, BBBC, Board Member Resignations, BBBE, Unexpired Term Fulfillment and Vacancies, and IHCA Summer School Policy.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm. Does anybody have questions or comments about the policies? All right, if you do find any questions or comments, please contact administration between now and the next meeting to discuss those issues. Next on our agenda, twelve dot one, agenda items for May ninth. Dr. Hamm.
We have two agenda items for the ninth. First of all, we'll be asking for approval for the policies that I just read to you. I won't go through that alphabet soup again.
Thank you.
And then, the majority of the board meeting will be a report on our advanced ed review and the information that we share with our visiting team.
All right, thank you very much. Any other items we'd like to see on this, our future agendas? All right, we next have our second public participation. Again, there's no one signed up, but if you'd like to speak before the board, please do You have something?
I wanted to back up to the future board agendas.
Yes.
Just to make a point that I, the Blithwood Academy, questions or concerns that I had.
Yeah.
Were still on the table, but I've actually emailed, I think, staff about that, so I'll just look for feedback.
Okay.
Before we see how we move forward with that.
Okay, thank you.
Looking forward to response.
All right, anyone who wants to speak before the board? Okay, with no one coming forward, we will now have board and superintendent comments. Usual, start at our left and move to my right. Dr. Elkins Johnson.
I know Tyson has already left for this evening, but just want to say thank you to Tyson Brown for giving us the inspirational moment, thank you for sharing your vision and your goals and things that you feel the board should work on. We really appreciate the feedback, and also want to say thank you to the SWAT team from Bookman Road, and always to the faculty and staff for being a part of this. Thank you.
I also want to thank Tyson Brown and Bookman Road for their presentations tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Mackey.
Thank you, Paul, the presenters that came for the next, and they're, looking at time, it's been a long night, just thank everyone in this room that we have. We talk about the teachers and, well, students hanging in there as they have testing at the end of the year, and I just want to encourage parents to hang in there as you're getting your kids to test in the last few weeks of school, make sure they have a checklist of the things that people all take for granted, or eating at school, and getting there whatever you do, just want to encourage parents, teachers hanging there as you're.
Oops, sorry. Teachers hanging there as you're administering testing and still trying to teach your coursework, administrators, and the people in this room who make things happen, just hang in there the last few weeks of school, one know that you're tired about now, and tired tonight because it's been a long night, but just thank you for all that you do, and just be encouraged, as you encourage students to be encouraged in this room as well. Bless you.
Ms. Plank.
Mr. Manning, can I go back? I just thought about something, and Lindsay and I both looked at each other and said, we forgot to say, it's Teacher Appreciation Week, so thank you to all the teachers for everything that you do. I posted it on Facebook on Monday, but want to just say thank you from Lindsay and probably the entire board, thank you for all that you do.
Thanks. Ms. Plank.
Uh, yeah, so I was going to talk about Teacher Appreciation Week. But I think it was, I'm just kidding. I use this book for various meetings, and I was just thumbing through it right at the end here, and I can, and along the way, I picked up some quotes that were lying on the table, were laying on the table for ELA teachers, I don't know which one.
Lying on the table.
Lying on the table, okay. So, but this one I picked up, just looked, it just, I have my hands here, says, "We become what we repeatedly do," and I've thought that was kind of interesting, that that's the one that popped up, because we, we become what we repeatedly do, and I think in this district, over the, this is our, my third budget season coming into this, on the board, it's hard to believe it's moved that quickly, but we, we do take a hard look at that, and I think that what we're showing by our repeated action is that we believe in furthering education, we believe in growth, we believe in choice, and we believe in balancing that in our, in our community with, with good stewardship as well. So, I want to thank again, I know we've talked about that a bunch tonight, but do appreciate that. Thanks for the presenters and to the teachers, we really do appreciate you. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you, Ms. Plank. Dr. Caution Parker.
I'd like to just, just do a special thank you to Cleveland Smith and Lottie Chisum, and Tina. They are on the hot seat every single meeting, and just do such a fantastic job, and when they walk out the room, I just, just look at them, you know, as they're, as they're leaving the room, and I'm, and I start thinking, you know, what a difficult thing they have to do, and, and they do it very well in dealing with a lot of these student issues. Happy Teacher Appreciation Week. Harry, thank you, thank you, thank you to you and your staff, Penny, and Shelley, and all the rest of them, we really appreciate everything you've done. Thanks.
Thanks. Ms. Shadd.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I echo the sentiments of all the board members that have spoken before me. I did want to make a small comment about the budget. As we see in a lot of organizations, you prioritize based on the money that you have. We try to be good stewards of the money that we are trusted with by the taxpayers, and then we make the investment in our students. And as we've always said, and I try to keep first in mind, students should always be at the top of the agenda. I believe that's what we are doing with this budget, and I appreciate the conversations that we had last week. As Ms. Mackey said, it did get intense at some point, but it was all because we wanted to make sure that we took care of the kids with the resources that we had, and make sure that we're good stewards of the public's money. But again, it's an investment, and the decisions that we're making tonight and in future years will impact this region for quite some time. I did also want to talk about this past week with some of the board members, we were here at R2I2, and we had great student engagement with our student advisory council, and they brought some of their concerns, and it was a wonderful time just to engage the students, and the future is extremely bright. We took a lot what they had to say to heart, and I know Dr. Grant and others are going to compile those concerns, and we will try to address some of them, they're just confirming things that we're already looking at, but I just want them to know that we heard their voices, and we will respond appropriately. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Absolutely. Dr. Hamm.
I want to start by making a comment about the Sparkleberry Country Fair. We're really fortunate that our community puts that fair on, and this year, they're giving us fifty thousand dollars in scholarships and teacher grants, which is really wonderful. I was, thought it was a real blessing that I got to be the grand marshal, that was fun, my grandchildren loved it, and Mr. Plank, in his white hat, was presiding over the cow milking contest, and he did a great job.
We finally found the job for Mr. Plank.
Yeah, and I was able to check something off my bucket list.
Anyway, it was a great event, and it does really, really good things for our schools, and we appreciate the work of the folks that, I mean, it is a big job to put on a fair like that, and I want to express appreciation for it. The NFL had its draft last year, and I want to say that we're going to have our draft for our boys in grades five through twelve this week. It's called the Draft Day GPS, Goals, Principles, and Service. It'll be a basketball-themed mentoring event, and I'm excited about the things that we're doing for our young men, and earlier, there was an event for our young women to support them as they think about what their goals are, how they can achieve them, and how we can help them do that. So, great mentoring events are going on in the district. We had over five hundred girls participate in the girls' event. It is, as several people have mentioned, National Teacher Appreciation Week. We're actually going to be celebrating it over two weeks, but I want to again, give a special shout-out to our South, our Richland Two Education Foundation that will be hosting our Teacher of the Year banquet on Thursday evening, and one of the highlights of that is that we announce our district teacher of the year, and we will be live streaming that, so if you want to see it, you can tune in at six o'clock and be among the very first people, including the district teacher of the year, who finds out at that meeting, at that dinner, that they're district of the year. It's an exciting time, it's a great way to show our appreciation to the teachers that do such a great job for us, and it's all because of the fundraising that our foundation does, which is wonderful. And then, finally, we have our last community conversation, and everybody is invited to participate in that. It will be on May the eighth at six o'clock at Vive Church on Clemson Road, and Dr. Grant is the one who works with those, and everyone is invited to participate. We'd love to hear your voices and the conversation that can go on between the school district and the members of the community, so I encourage you to come.
Thank you very much for all those comments. I want to say, I apologize for not being at the student advisory meeting, as y'all know, that's very dear to my heart. I was sick and had a fever, and I thought that's something that I should not spread the love with, so I stayed home, but I really regret not being there. I think it's an important time for us to sit down with students and hear their comments, and look forward to getting the summary on that, on that meeting, so very glad that we had it, just hate that I couldn't be part of it, I hope everyone understands why I wasn't there. I think they actually appreciate it for that reason, so. More pizza for you, thank you. You know, I want to comment, we, we as board members, you know, we all love what we do, we love our, our job and the role that we have with the district, and we have some really important jobs, and one of those is setting the budget, and I think we did a great job as a board, working together, having the spirited conversations, but coming to middle ground on a responsible budget, and one that is an investment in the community, as Mr. Shadd said, and one that I think we all gladly make for our students and for our community. One, one of the other jobs we have is, you know, the, the student matters, when we look at these appeals, and, you know, these are really hard decisions, I mean, there's, they're tough decisions, there's no, no good answer sometimes for the situation, and we've all been, young folks, we've all made mistakes, some of us as adults make mistakes, and it's just, I want folks to know that that is a part of the job that I think all of us think about even after we go home, and, you know, in days coming, do we make the right decision, do we not, and that we don't take those decisions lightly, and, and can certainly weigh on us at times as we ponder the future of the students that we have, you know, those decisions in our hands, so Cleve and Lottie, I know y'all make much more, many more of those decisions than we do, and we certainly respect the work y'all do, because it is hard work. It's, there's nothing easy about it. I think we have a great district, great students, great community, and we did a lot of work tonight. Unfortunately, we were a little bit late getting out here, but we were doing the people's work and continue to do so, and as I said, we love the opportunity to serve in this role. So, with that, I will leave it. If I can have a motion to adjourn. I never, that's the one where everybody's racing, other times I'm waiting. Y'all have a great night, thank you very much.